The application is to provide a new open wood deck for the rear of the existing residence. Throughout the application process, it turned out that there was an existing patio that was undocumented, so that has now been added to the application also. I received some comments at the previous meeting from the consulting engineers. Those comments have all been addressed. We also just got a couple of clarifications on some of the calculations which I have here. I did send these out to Han engineering today. Appreciate their assistance with this. This is the Han's calculations. So, part of those revisions that came up the other day were that I had counted the driveway as part of the coverage and I had also sort of double counted the new deck. But the reality is that the deck is located above the existing patio, so it won't count against the coverage. So, those new calculations show the new coverages.
I believe you're still over on the coverage.
We're still over, correct.
Variance for the coverage for the rear yard setback.
Yes, the total overage, it's a net add of 422 square feet.
Okay.
So, it is over, yes.
Okay.
So, we will go back to the zoning board for that.
And the only comment I have that is, I'm not sure if it shows on that plan, but where you had your silt fence and then you had the soil stockpile area outside the silt fenced area. I would just suggest that when you come back to the final plan, that you just move that the soil stockpile area really inside the silt fence.
Yeah, inside the fence, okay. We have it right over here.
People are gonna have to be knocking down the fence to...
To get in there, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Other than that, I have other comments. Do any of the board members have any comments inside? No? Any comments on anyone in the public on this? No? Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yes. It was in December 2018, Jessica resupplied for site development plan approval to construct a new deck at the rear of her house at 56 Sycamore Lane. The deck requires variances for coverage in the rear yard setback. Han engineering reviewed the plans and in the memorandum dated December 4th listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in the subsequent submission. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on December 5th and January 9th to type 2 reaction under SECRE and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Reece Residence prepared by Matthew Behrens Architects, subject to one, receiving variances from the zoning Board of Appeals for coverage in the rear yard setback and two, complying with the items in the Han memorandum dated January 8th, 2019.
Any comments on the resolution?
No.
No? Can I have a motion to approve?
So, motion.
Second?
Got you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So, the next item is 2018-19, Jacob Staburski, 18 Meadowbrook Road.
Residence. This is for an addition to the rear of the existing residence, a one-story addition, plus taking a one-and-a-half-story center structure here and raising that up to a two-story structure. There were a couple of comments from Han engineering that have all been addressed related to some of the root zones of the trees, also the location of the stormwater retention system. I think these have all been addressed and have highlighted the areas of disturbance correctly and have been addressed all the comments to date. Does require variances for the front yard, also a variance for the side yard for the AC pad and also for lock garage.
And then also you showed your access to the rear yard too.
Correct, yes.
The construction access.
Yep.
Okay. Again, any comments from any board members? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? All right, Mary Ann, you have a resolution on this?
Yes. It was in November 2018, Jacob Staburski applied for site development plan approval to construct an addition and convert the second floor, half-story of his house to a full second floor and to install other improvements at his property at 18 Meadowbrook Road, which is located in the View Preservation District. The improvements require variances for coverage, the front yard setback and the side yard setback. Han engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated November 6th and December 4th listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on November 7th and December 5th, 2018, and January 9th, 2019. The proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. It's a type 2 reaction under SECRE. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Staburski Residence prepared by Matthew Behrens, subject to one, receiving variances from the zoning Board of Appeals for coverage in front yard and side yard setbacks and complying with the items in the Han memorandum dated January 8th. There were a couple of other items in there that needed to be addressed, but...
You're okay, you're right. They would come back to Doug and to Ed. I can have a motion to approve. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is 2019-01, Jared and Mia Libby, 16 Bertha Place.
Okay. Come in your seats.
My name is Miles Kemischerkoch here on behalf of Michael Lewis Architects and Jared and Mia Libby, the owners of 16 Bertha Place. So, for this project, the owners requested that we look into a small addition of the dining room, replacing some glazing along the rear of the house to get a better connection to the backyard. And a rework of various interior spaces. That included reworking the front entry and front door. And out of that grew a desire to rework the front porch, get it more in keeping with the rest of the home aesthetically. We're also proposing a slight rework of the existing stone walkway and the connection to the driveway for better circulation. As you can probably see, the house predates the build zoning ordinances and about half of it, the front half, sits within the setback, the front setback that is. And though with the reworking of the front porch, we're not proposing increasing that projection to the front setback. We do understand and agree that there are variances required there. In regards to coverage, the existing coverage is about 30% over. And again, even though we're not proposing an increase in coverage, we're endeavoring to decrease the overall net coverage. We do understand that we're altering the existing non-conforming and understand and agree that we'll need a variance for that as well. As part of the Han comments, you mentioned the window wells. Thank you for pointing that out. Those were not included in our coverage calculations, but we will make that correction. Looking at the renovations and specifically in response to Han's pointing out of our position in the new preservation overlay, I just wanted to point to the addition in the back. And as you can see, it's significantly shorter than the main structure of the house. And it's also contained on two sides and sheltered by existing elements. I brought a long picture that might just clarify that a little bit. It wasn't in your materials.
Right, and it's going to be built over the existing patio, so that's why there's no increase in coverage.
Exactly, exactly. And regarding the view, it should not affect anybody's view of the Hudson in a negative way. And as to the other comments from Han, we fully intend to implement those minor changes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
I think what you're doing on the front porch is that you're taking a semicircular porch and you're making it into a rectangular shaped porch?
Exactly. And I actually brought another photo of the front porch if you'd like to take a look.
Okay. So, if the only thing that may come out here are a couple of these shrubs that are right next to the porch.
Exactly.
And there are no trees in the area of the work that you're doing.
Exactly.
Okay, I don't have any other comments. Georgia Hillary, do you have any comments on this matter?
I think it's a procedural thing that we've run into in the past and we've requested people to, for the view preservation, to at least document it.
Okay.
So, I think it's...
That's why I'm holding. Right, okay. Then I'll keep quiet.
Yes.
So, it will be documented?
Yes, we will state no negative impact on the drawings.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? I think it's minor enough that a resolution can be adopted this evening or submitted this evening and you still have to go to the ZBA, subject to the ZBA and subject to meeting any of the comments in Doug's letter. All right, so Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah, we will.
We'll have to go first. In January 2019, Jared and Mia Libby applied for site development plan approval to build a small addition at the rear and reconstruct a covered porch on their house at 16 Bertha Place, which is located in the View Preservation District. The improvements require variances for coverage in the front yard setback. Han engineering reviewed the plans and in the memorandum dated January 8th, 2019 listed a number of minor issues with the drawings. The planning board held a public hearing on the application tonight. The proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties and the actions to type 2 action under SECRE. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Modifications to 16 Bertha Place prepared by Michael Lewis Architects, subject to one, receiving variances from the zoning Board of Appeals for coverage in front yard setback and two, complying with the items in the Han memorandum dated January 8th. George, one of which was that they have to state that there won't be any impact on the view of the Hudson.
I can have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second. I'll do second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Next item is 2019-03, ETA Orgo LLC, 94th Lane.
There it is. John Malone, Pretty Small in Architecture, representing the Pardano's family. The project is for an addition to an existing house, a small ranch house on Orgo Lane. We are reusing the existing foundation to the extent possible, reusing the existing footprint. The program for the house includes passive house construction, which is a type of super insulated house that is common in Northern Europe and Germany and is used sometimes in the U.S. And I don't think it's very common in Westchester, so it will be one of the few that are in Westchester right now. So, it's basically a super insulated house that focuses views and glass in certain areas. And so, it might have in certain areas, it'll have 16 or 18-inch thick walls that are filled with insulation. And in the end, a passive house, like in order to heat a passive house, it might need the power in the winter of like a hair dryer. Like, that's the kind of house that it...
Is it solar?
It would, there is potentially a solar component on this, but it has more, the green impact of the house has mostly to do with its insulating. Like, you're basically so airtight, so insulated that it allows that to do that. So, there's also a feature that may not have been that clear in the drawing set, that the swimming pool that's being proposed is what's known as a natural swimming pool. So, rather than use chemicals if you're part of water, it uses a basically biofilter system, similar to how you would treat water, storm water, by having it infiltrate through plants in like a rain garden. There's a portion of the pool that would be dedicated to filtering the water. It's like you're making a pond, you know, that sort of cleans itself with plant material. There is some treatment associated with it, there are some treatments, but generally it's a chemical-free system. We have comments from Han that we received which we can go through. I think the first...
I don't know if we need to go through all of them.
Yeah. There was a few that I had a few questions on, if it was okay.
Well, then why don't you go on those?
Right. So, in terms of the building coverage, we understand that we're over coverage. There was a question about there's a rock outcropping shown in the pool and Doug thought it would, or Doug weren't sure whether it's a real rock. It's actually a rock, a constructed rock that's part of the natural pool, so it does count as coverage. So, we've covered that. It's a new, it's a rock with quotation marks on it. The variance for the front yard is just something I wanted to touch on because I just wanted to make sure I understand while we're discussing here. So, a portion of the existing house extends into the front yard. I guess we can see that here on slide 4. So, a portion of the existing footprint of the gate line portion extends into the front yard here. There's a gate line here now. We are taking the second, the adequate level off of the building and, you know, leaving it a flat roof in that area. So, there's actually a reduction in volume on the non-conformity?
You're altering the non-conformity, just like the application before you.
I'll say, so even if it's an altered, so we're still gonna ask for a variance for that, I just, because we had a conversation.
It also was difficult to figure out what was existing, what's proposed because of the two pages.
You just want to see the difference. It wouldn't matter either way.
We don't need to see, we got it.
Okay, okay. But is there, but is there any reason, we would always be asking for a variance in this condition, even if it's a reduction of the non-conformity?
Right.
Okay. There's a question about the basement being counted as a story. A portion of the building, you know, from the front, we're showing a portion of the building would be one story, a portion of the building would be two stories, except the garage level is exposed, well, it's not really exposed to the street. So, that's a section that you're gonna say that would be three story.
Hey, look at the definition of stories and give us a calculation on the finished area in the basement. That'll tell us if it's a story or not.
Okay, so it's, it's not the FAR definition of a story, it's the, I think, I understand. I think it should be counted as a story.
It's not counting as the FAR covered, uh, story. It's current, the definition of stories. You may be able to prove it's not, but we can't tell.
Okay, all right.
Basically, it has to do with...
So, if it is, we'll revise that to be, okay. The, there is a question about a wall which will, we're not supposed to, there shouldn't be any six-foot walls. I think there must be a top of wall, bottom of the wall error. There's a wall that's only supposed to be 30 inches.
Yeah, the difference between Hudson Engineering and your plan, that's two different issues.
All right, so we'll correct.
The wall to the right of the garage.
Right. And then the last thing that, well, there's one other zoning thing, but on the, we calculated the portion of the basement, perhaps they are, and we believe we've calculated correctly, I just wanted to make sure. So, the basement of the existing, existing house does not have three feet exposed to grade, so we counted that as zero. There's a little connector piece here which does have exposed grade, we counted that at 100%. And then the garage, which is also, we counted at 100% and subtracted the 400. Does that seem right?
Yeah, I gotta, I'll double check here.
Okay, so I just wanted to...
Just not to call that, we just wanted to make sure it was correct for the connector piece that we weren't sure.
Yeah, the connector...
It actually has to do with the wall. It's the same as the wall issue, because the wall's there, it's different also.
Yeah.
This is the same.
Oh, this wall out here... We counted it like it's exposed.
Okay, that's the problem, the six-foot wall that was on the engineering plan wasn't on the architecture.
Yeah, we're not using the wall to hide it or anything. We're discounting, we're doing the most conservative approach to make sure that we've got it covered. And then, the question, the thing that we were not expecting was the wetlands request. So, is that, is that a locally mapped wetlands?
Yep.
So, what is our course of action on this pond?
If you do a wetland study, just like you would do elsewhere, show the buffer, if it's outside of the buffer, you're fine.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it doesn't check the distance too.
It might be fine.
It looks like it's within, but...
Okay.
Buffer clearly wasn't proper.
But locating the edge of that wetland, this is like a, this pond is a...
At my office, I give it a map.
Okay. But do you think we need to get it, because it's like a man-made hard edge thing, do we need to get Beth Evans to market?
I think you need the surveyor first to decide if it's on or off the top, or, I mean, if the buffer is in a construction zone first.
Okay. And just determine then, like, if it's not in the construction zone, then?
You probably don't need Beth Evans, but until we see it on the plan, we don't know.
Okay, all right. So, we'll start by just locating it, getting their offers, and then if there's any overlap, we can determine if it's good. Okay. I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Oh, the view preservation overlay, we're assuming there's a request for scale information because we're asking for the coverage variance.
Yeah. Well, yeah, well, that's it. Well, two things that we're getting to, the coverage. And again, you're really demolishing this house and you're just using the existing foundation and then you're expanding it quite a bit, you're expanding it 111% over the existing coverage. And so, you're going over the permitted coverage on a lot that actually is, actually oversized too. I mean, this is a 1F40 zone and you have a 49,000 square foot between the two lots. So, again, because I view this as really new construction, I don't see this as, this is not renovation or reconstruct to me because you've taken it down to the foundation and now you're building a house that is totally different and totally out of scale to what was there to begin with. So, I would like to see you reduce that coverage to get it down so you do not need a variance for coverage.
Okay. So, just, just our understanding, so that the footprint of the house, the portion of the coverage, the coverage, the coverage variance that we would be requesting is about 400 square feet?
Oh, I calculated from what you, well, again, if your numbers are correct, I calculated it's 186 square feet over the permitted coverage.
The, yeah. The thing is, no, I'm saying, well, the coverage, I'm saying the coverage variance that we're asking for, it could be, the way that we're thinking about it is that part of what we're doing is this pool that we're doing is about 1,200 square feet, or actually it's 1,400 and 1,450 square feet. The actual swimmable area of the pool is like 700 square feet. So, the coverage variance that we're requesting has more to do with accommodating this specialized pool than we're doing than it does with the building footprint. If we had done a traditional pool and that, we would be, and this part of, part of our argument for the coverage, what we want to do is argue, we want to sort of describe it in that way, is that we would like to do this pool, the, in order to do this pool, it takes a larger footprint, the, the impact is associated with coverage, which is related to runoff and storm water. We feel that the benefit of the swimming pool, the green swimming pool and the not the use of chemicals sort of offsets that potential increase that's associated with storm water. This pool is really gonna look more like a pond, it's planted year-round. It has, even though there's a coverage impact, you know, it's a coverage because of the way we're interpreting building coverage, it's almost like a natural environment and that that increase over what would be a typically sized pool for this lot has to do more with this natural system that we're using. That's, that's one of the reasons.
Well, if you want to, if you want to go forward to the ZBA with that, go ahead, but as far as I'm concerned though, again, I think you're talking about 186 square feet over coverage and you're asking for a 111% increase in the coverage. I think that's quite excessive. And to find 186 square feet, I think you should be able to do that, do something to reduce the coverage and get it down so you don't need a variance on this, okay?
Right. And I mean, I think that's our, just so you know, the reason, the only reason we're asking is because it was related to the pool.
The pool is an amenity, it's not excessive, okay? So, again, we just went through this on another application over the last few months.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. No, but in the, but in the, in the discussion, and we can do this at a different level, but I just wanted you guys to know, to understand what our thinking was about it and why we're requesting that. It wasn't just willy-nilly, it was just, we're trying to fit this pool in which has a huge footprint for the system that's involved.
See if you can come up with 186 square feet of walls or reduce the size of the garage or something to get it down to. And then things, the overlay, the preservation, I'm sorry, the view preservation overlay. I think it's important in regard to the house, particularly across the street from you.
Right.
Be able to see, I'd like to see a section through your house, your proposed house and house across the street, see what it looks like in terms of...
Height, okay. So, and just so you know, we have met with the Halliwells and reviewed the proposal with them and they've been involved with the decisions about...
I think visually, that way we can see what the height looks like compared to what's there now.
Okay. I think, you know, the rest of, the rest of the items on here, there was one about the driveway grading. The way that the site is, you know, what we're trying to do is maintain the driveway grade that we have right now. I spoke to Ed briefly this morning and said what you would be looking for there is for us to show that we're not making the driveway any steeper.
Show existing proposed in the cross-section.
It looks like that's what you had before.
Yeah, it's not an ideal situation, it's just we didn't know how to get a lower level without having more impact, more coverage associated with that.
The house, the house sits low, I mean, the whole goes down.
The whole thing is basically is more than a story down, you know, it's, and this is part of the struggle with the driveway. I don't, I don't think there was anything else unless you guys had other...
I don't know, Georgia Hillary, do you have any other comments or questions?
Are you gonna get this certified or is this just using passive techniques?
No, we have a, we have a consultant involved and we're gonna try to really do it.
Okay, good.
Two is that I would suggest you just at least quantify your premise, which is that in essence, your structure is complying and the over is purely for the pool and to show that numerically.
Okay. What's shown right now in the pool is that there is a regen area that's indicated. So, there's the swimming pool, the regen area, the equipment and this, this rock feature. So, you can see the regen area associated with the pool is 318 square feet, 370 square feet of the pool. So, I mean, we can, we can show, it's a lot of space, you know, and also underneath this deck area here, it's not, we could eliminate this deck, but there's an equipment component, so there's pumps and stuff on any tech deck that's making the whole system work.
Doug, how much of what's being proposed here has to be covered in the stormwater detention system? The entire thing?
Pretty much everything.
We had an initial conversation, like, how could we treat that? Could we, could we say that the regen area is not...
I was just thinking, I mean, it's almost like a bio retention practice itself.
Right. It's just a new thing, we don't...
It's a little more too, maybe if it accommodates it, I don't know.
How many square feet is the regen area?
Like 318.
That's with boulders and soil or just the soil and the plantings?
Uh, I guess, that's the footprint of it right now, but...
Why don't we look at the details and then we'll go over it.
Why don't you give us a better detail of what's going on there?
Right.
I mean, it could be considered a mitigation.
Right.
It's like a stormwater practice.
But other than the pool, everything else that's being constructed has to be handled on site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, right now, we have the stormwater system size to accommodate the entire footprint of the pool.
Yeah, I mean, it's not appropriate, yeah.
I mean, if the, if it's true, maybe we need more details on the retention pond, I'm sorry, the...
Regen.
Regeneration system to see that it's gonna be a landscape feature, not a structure. Is it gonna be cement lined or is it gonna be cement?
We need all the details on it.
Yeah, I mean, there probably would still be retaining associated with it, like... Yeah, I mean, there probably would still be retaining associated with it, like we could count the retaining and not the retention.
That's the same, is it going to be a solid bottom, is it a fabric bottom with dirt soils?
It's a solid bottom. See, that's the thing, it's like, it's like a biofilter, it's not really dealing with storm water, it's dealing with the pool. But I wonder if there's a way to design this.
We'll just details on the plan if we can. Even if you have a detail that somebody else doesn't cover.
Like a standard detail that we...
For example here.
Andrew, is there, or do you know, is there a lip on that driveway or are you handling water that's coming off of Fargo Lane right now?
Right now, there is a little lump that's probably keeping some. I think there's an overflow condition where it might be coming down, but there is a, you know, what is that called, like, it's not a...
Crown.
There's a crown, it's all right in there, I don't know.
Right. Okay, any other comments from the board members? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? Okay, well, I guess I'll address all those issues then, and I'll see you next matter whenever.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, next matter is twenty nineteen dash oh two, in the paint, eighteen North Cottin.
Good evening. I'm Christina Griffin, I'm the architect for renovations to the Payne residence, and we're proposing a new deck in the back of the house. And this deck is going to take the place of a concrete walk, a bocal door, and this area that's in pink, which is an existing stone patio, that is, that was not documented. So we're going to have to consider this as an increase in the coverage, this pink area. We're also planning to expand this concrete slab, so we have a slab for the new condensers, adding central air to the house. We received Tom and Katie's comments, and we're going to be going through them. What we wanted to do was to replace the bocal door with a hatch type door that actually sits flush with the deck, but we're going to look into seeing whether that meets New York State code. Also, I want to mention that our coverage is at fifty-two percent existing and proposed is fifty-five percent. Once we add these areas in pink, that will add three percent more, so the house is nonconforming as it is. This is just as our floor plan, so we would like to have doors leading out to this new deck, which is going to go over an existing stone patio. And this is where the bocal door is now, that we want to replace with a hatch, and this is where we would like to put our air condensers. This is just showing the elevation, showing the new doors out to the deck. There's a bocal door here right now that we would like to replace with a hatch type access door that sits flush when it's closed. And this is the concrete slab we'd like to extend so that we have space for our two new air condensers. We have, we are also planning to put a new six foot fence on each side, on the property line on each side, and this is the fence beyond so that the condensers won't be seen by the neighbor, but this has already been reviewed and approved by the ARB. And I have a few photographs of the house. This is the color scheme we have in preparation with the ARB. Sorry, I showed the new door, the fence, and the condensers. This is the view of the, these are some photos of the house. This is the front, this is the back of the house. This is where we're planning to relocate this door to here and then have new sliding doors here, and then to cover the existing paved areas right here with a wood deck. And this is the existing bocal door that we'd like to replace. This is the old stone patio that was not documented, so it's going to be considered an increase in the coverage. And these are just views of the yard to show that there is a hedge on the property lines and that's, but on the side facing this yard, we're going to be putting a new fence here and here.
Those are the side yards?
This is the side yard, this is the rear yard, and this is the side yard facing south, the other side. And this chain link fence will be replaced with a wood fence.
So the entire backyard will be fenced in, essentially?
Yes, yeah, it's shown on our site plan, yes.
Is any stormwater management required on this project?
We have to revise numbers, I don't...
Okay, so you have to check.
It's documented. It may. We have, we have concessions on the code, it's a very small project, so.
So that this deck is not going past the back of the house?
No. This, right now, the chain link fence that you saw in that photo is here, it's right here, and the stone patio comes right to it.
Right to it, okay.
And we're going to just go over that stone patio and replace the fence. Well, this fence actually isn't, is right, the new fence will be here, which is next to this shared driveway, and then there will also be a new fence along the side yard and the rear yard.
Okay.
What's going on in the garage?
We have no work in the garage.
It's just, no, it's just a garage?
Yes.
Any comments from either board member?
Sorry to get a car.
I was going to say...
It's nice looking.
Bicycle.
Suspicious. Any other comments? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? I think then just respond to the comments in the Han memorandum and in the Nolan memorandum too. She may have had some comments, so just respond to those and we'll see you next time. Okay? Any other matters?
We'll have a turn around shop.
And a motion to adjourn? Second?
All right.
Meeting is adjourned.